Our faculty is unable to be with us today since he is at a system-wide, statewide academic senate meeting in Southern California, so he's not here. Our general agenda today is to, first, we're going to turn, and second, to Andy, who has some information that he can share with us from the perspective of his organization and the California Faculty Association and what is transpiring in Sacramento. Then we'll probably come back to me, and I'd like to take us through where we stand in eight-nine still. We have some issues to resolve yet in eight-nine and try to answer some questions and concerns that have been raised over the last several weeks and are on people's mind. And then talk more about the nine-ten budget and see where we are at that point. So with that, it's great to welcome, of course, Tim and Andy and Derek and Nicolette. We're delighted to do these, and I hope the turnout will continue to be as strong at the various town hall meetings because it's a good way for us to be able to be ongoing communication about what events, both locally and statewide, and now even nationally, the impact that they're having on our academic community. So with that, maybe Andy, you could share with us what you know.
Okay.
Since you are a little bit closer on the ground than perhaps the rest of us, if you want.
What I'm telling you now is based on best information that I have about what's happening with the budget as of a couple of hours ago in Sacramento. And I want to start by saying, though both the Assembly and the senate have passed the same budget, as part of the budget agreement reached in the middle of the night by the senate, and then the Assembly just rolled over and gave Senator Maldonado everything he wanted. So it's his budget, including a gasoline tax rollback. I mean, there was supposed to be a 12 percent a gallon gasoline tax, and Maldonado said, "I don't want that anymore." And everybody said, "Sure, whatever you want," which digs a slightly larger hole, about $2 billion over the next two years in the budget process. But there is no specific budget, in part because part of the agreement that was worked out is there will be approximately $600 million worth of line item vetoes by Governor Schwarzenegger, which he has not yet made. And those $600 million of line item vetoes will go primarily, or if not exclusively, for prisons. It'll be cut out of the prison budget, but before you get excited thinking he's finally got his priorities right, if you remember, there is now a federal order that we do something about our prisons to bring them into compliance because we are violating Eighth Amendment rights of our prisoners by overcrowding and poor medical facilities. There's a certain, apparently, part of this $600 million is to tell the federal judge to stuff it. So he's saying, "You're not going to tell me what to do." So we may be digging a larger hole in the future, but that is, at least there's no line item veto aimed at higher education. The highlights of it is that there are somewhere in the neighborhood of $12 billion worth of revenue versus the approximate $14 billion that was predicted, and that is, as I said, primarily as a result of the gas tax disappeared. There's approximately $15 to $16 billion estimated in program cuts and other cuts, and then there's about $11 billion worth of borrowing. And in addition, there is one additional issue that is very, very important to the CSU, and that is that all of this is predicted on how much money we're going to get from the national, the federal bailout money. Specifically, what portion of the stabilization money is going to come to California that is discretionary. And part of this agreement says that if the amount of money that comes from the national government to California in this category is of a certain amount, then this will be the hit that individual departments will take. If it is less than that, that will trigger further hits. And the further hits to the CSU for '09-10, as I understand it, would be $50 million. And what we don't know with an absolute certainty yet is whether the amount of money that is going to come to the state of California in this category will be enough to avoid triggering the hit. Okay? So we do know that the $66 million approximate that they have been talking about on a fairly regular basis, cut out of this year's and next year's, that's in there. But whether that will be added to or not, that's what we don't know. Okay? The other things that have direct impact on us is that there will be a special election on May 19th. There will be, I believe, five measures on the ballot, and they all have to do with dealing with the lottery, dealing with Prop 98. The K-12 teachers have virtually guaranteed that if there's a hard cap on spending, which is the kind of poison pill that we face in the future, they will be exempt. There's also borrowing from a couple of other propositions, including, in bad times, the idea is to take money away from mental health services to give it to somebody else, et cetera. So there's a series of measures on the ballot on May 19th, and if those don't pass, then most of what happened over the last couple of days disappear. Because that's where, you know, the revenues are predicated on these ballot measures. And I talked to our political director, who I think has a good sense of what's going on, and we asked, "What's the fallout, you know, what's the fallback plan if they don't pass?" And he said, "At this point, the legislature has no fallback plan." Okay? There's also, as many of, the other important part of the May 19th ballot is what's called the cap on spending. And the cap on spending has to do with what they claim will be evening out how much money departments will get in good times and in bad times. But the problem is, is that the base years will harm us. So the best-case scenario, if the cap goes into effect, is in really, really good years, we'll be just about as bad off as we are now, and anything short of that, we could get hurt even worse. The cap will be disastrous for a number of statewide agencies because of the hits we already taken. Right? I mean, we're starting off from a low point. So those will be on the ballot. That'll be a critical part of how this all works itself out, and so in one sense, we don't know until the 19th of May. And then also remember one last kind of piece of information about what's going to happen in the next couple of months is that the Department of Finance will give its read on how much taxes we actually took in. This is what usually we call the May revise, and people think that the May revise comes from the governor. It doesn't. The Department of Finance says, "This is how much money you really have," and then the governor uses that to adjust the proposed budget. This year, the budget will already semi-be locked in, but the estimates are the May revise, we still may be short about $4 billion. Okay? So it's a very kind of bleak picture. The best thing we can hope for, I think, for us directly, is that the amount of the money that is coming from the national government, the so-called stimulus package that is called stabilization money, discretionary stabilization money, is one term I'm hearing used, will be enough so it will not trigger the additional budget cuts, which would have a negative impact on the CSU. The last piece that many of you may have heard about is the idea that Senator Maldonado insisted that he wants to essentially revamp the way we have elections in the state of California, and that he would do essentially away with partisan elections at the state level. I mean, you would still have partisanship, but anybody could vote for anybody, anybody can run, and you don't have to even declare what party you belong to. And if nobody gets a majority in the primary, then the top two vote-getters go to the general election, even if they're both in the same political party. The idea is, and this, you know, classic good government idea, is to blame all the problems in America on political parties instead of on lobbyists, interest groups, et cetera. That will not be on the ballot until June of 2010. So that doesn't have an immediate impact in any way, shape, or form. But those are the general outlines of the things that I have been told, I have been reading, and I have heard about, and my information is now an hour and 45 minutes old, so you may all have additional information because it is unwrapping. I mean, we are talking about $42 billion in 18 months, so it's a little bit imprecise. And after everybody has done their presentation, I'll be glad to help answer questions if I can.
Steve, we'll take one.
We had a budget passed in September, and it didn't work, and so we have to go through this. What are the chances that this won't work and we'll have to go through it all again before this?
It will depend on what happens in the May election. My understanding is, is if they, if they do not pass the measures on the ballot, dealing with Proposition 98, Proposition 10, Proposition 63, and the lottery, that we will have, the hole will still be there. That's my understanding of the situation, so, and there will be an enormous struggle on, these measures are by no means a certainty, nor will they break down into the normal, this group is here and this group is there. This is a budget that really, I mean, if you say, well, if everybody dislikes it, they must have done something right. When a budget is hated this much, I suspect it's because everybody did something wrong. But it's a disastrous budget that could fall apart based on what happens in the election.
Let me see if I can take what Andy has told us and bring it down to our local level. And if you go to your handout, it's going to be the page third in. It says 2009-10 budget planning. And it starts out with the first line that talks about January 2009 budget proposal, state university fee increase. This was in the governor's January budget where he's proposing that the CSU trustees raise the student tuition, our state university fee, by 10 percent. And we calculate that if that happens, which I'm sure is now part of this budget bill that they discussed, would produce $2,461,000 for SSU. So that would be new money to us. We're required, under trustee policy, to set aside one-third of that to financial aid, so that's 834, so that's a negative number. The special session reduction, this is the 1,471 number, this is Sonoma State University's share of the 66.3 million that Andy just discussed, that we are pretty sure is there and will not go away. So that's a pretty sure reduction, and that will be our share of it from the CSU, 1,471. Then there are some things that were never in the January budget, and I'm sure are not in the, what we'll call now, the March budget or the February budget. And these are unfunded mandatory costs, but real costs that Sonoma State University will incur associated primarily with health care, dental care, new space, and energy throughout the CSU. And our cut of that, from our discussions with the chancellor's office, will be $816,000, primarily associated with benefits for our employees. There is a commitment that we made to the California Faculty Association for something called PPI. This is the merit salary increase pool for post, what is that, Andy?
Post-promotion increase.
Post-promotion increase. We're estimating that for us, that will be $200,000 a year, it's base money, and it's the second year of three years.
Two.
Second year of two.
Two years.
We have one more year to go after this one.
No.
This is the last one?
This is our last year.
That's good.
And the number they've given us is 168.
We estimate it at 200, and of course, you'll tell us at the end, Melinda, after you calculate, but for a planning figure, we went a little higher. So that could be a little better or a little worse, depending on what actually turns out to be the case. I've asked Craig Dawson and Christopher Deneau to do an estimate of what our utility will be next year, and we will receive some money from the CSU associated with those mandatory costs to help offset our utility bill. But we estimate that we will need an additional $200,000 to offset utilities at Sonoma State University. And that's the general fund portion of utilities. The way we do utility increases at SSU is we divide the utility costs among the operating fund or general fund and all the self-support funds. So if you're a housing program, or an extended education program, or a student union program, or an ASI program, or a health center, I'm looking for all our self-support funds, you'll also will get a utility increase next year because you pay your fair share of that cost. The next several items are associated with what we're calling campus priorities or presidential priorities. These are local to Sonoma State University, and they will have more discussion in the president's budget advisory committee. But as an opening, Dr. Armaniana remains committed to, even in these difficult budget times, to make the third installment to the faculty development program. This will bring our faculty development allocation to $600,000 of base money. There will be some discussion in PBAC whether or not we wish to do that, but I understand that Eduardo had a conversation with Ruben just yesterday, and Ruben would be here today, by the way. It's not that he's disinterested, believe me, but he's sick. He has some illness that he came down with, so he's unable to be on campus today. But he remains committed to do that, and when I talk about the eight-nine year, I'll come back to talk about the allocation for 2008-9. What's emerging in some discussion on campus is a recommendation or a thought, and this is coming out of the campus cabinet. It has not had broad-based campus discussion, so it would be useful to have some conversation about it here today, and of course, in PBAC and throughout the spring semester. We're calling it the Center for Gender, Culture, and Sexuality, but it's broader than that. It is an investment in diversity issues. Diversity is a major initiative at Sonoma State University right now and has been so for the last several months. Eduardo and Barbara Lesh-McCaffrey are in various committees, leading committees, discussing this issue from both the academic senate perspective and the administrative perspective. And an emerging priority is coming forward in the area of diversity, and we've given it a price tag of $325,000 as a rough estimate, and there will be more discussion about that as time comes to be. But it would represent a local cost that we would make an investment in this area. When you add all that up and subtract it from the new revenue, you can see that we would be negative $1,585. And that's probably a best-case scenario. And listening to what Andy just said, we could go down further, which is the question mark below, because if some more cuts come because the federal stimulus is not enough to offset the proposed reductions to the operating budget, this question mark will turn into a number. It would be our goal that it is a zero. That would be the best thing that could happen. But it's possible that it could be a number, and we don't know that number yet. And a lot of that will have to do with whatever the governor does, what happened with the $12 million that went out for the, $12 billion that went for the fee, the gas fee, and what is in the stimulus bill, and how that gets allocated and used. So if we're a campus and we're looking out, plan, I'm looking now at our division-based fiscal officers who look at these numbers, I'd be at least planning for the $1,585, with some discussion about CCGS or the diversity issue. We'll have to have a discussion or a dialogue on the campus about whether this priority is high enough and important enough that even in these difficult times, we wish to make an investment in that area. So that's where we stand with nine-ten. And I imagine that it will be a few days, would you not agree, Andy, until people understand what's going on with the stimulus bill? Because there's a lot of confusion in that bill, and how California is going to allocate its funds once it understands what it's getting, and what are the restrictions, who knows? But for our planning purposes, the campus would be looking at least at the $1,500,000, $1,600,000, maybe more, but probably not less.
I would argue that possibly to have real clarity about the impact of the federal stimulus may be more than a few days. It may be a couple of weeks until it breaks out because there's another aspect of it, which is there's going to be some substantial money in the stimulus package that is going to come to relieve Medicare, because healthcare is a huge cost. And the question is, is money that relieves Medicare, does that free up other money? And if it does free up other money, how much of it's going to go where? So it's, Larry's absolutely right, it's really complicated, but I think it may be a little longer than a couple of days. It could be a couple of weeks until this all kind of settles out.
Let me visit with everyone a little bit about where we are in eight-nine. It's kind of bizarre that we're dealing with eight-nine and nine-ten simultaneously here, but until we open up for discussion and questions, it's important for folks to sort of understand certain steps that we have taken and certain other issues that are still on the table for the current fiscal year. The first thing that is important to keep in mind is the $1 million, what you see there is an anticipated one-time reduction this spring of $1,471. From all indications that I have seen, we will get that reduction in the spring semester, $1,471, which then becomes permanent, which we just talked about in nine-ten. And here's how that $1,471 would go out to the various divisions. Most of the divisions, I'm going to come back to academic affairs in a minute, but most of the other divisions are going to make that reduction by holding positions that they currently have vacant. So their salary savings being generated, and they will generally make those reductions on a one-time basis with these one-time salary savings. In the case of academic affairs, it probably won't work that way. The way we'll handle the reduction in academic affairs is that we will make an allocation of enrollment money that we're over-enrolled, that's sufficient to meet the 855-387. And there is, in my judgment at this point, and we're still getting our final data as we get closer and closer into this period of February, there is still sufficient money in over-enrollment revenue to make good on the $450,000 commitment that we allocated back in December to open additional course sections. And I actually think there'll be a little bit more money on top of that, although I don't have a firm figure yet. But I don't think that there'll be a cut coming into the academic programs as a result of this spring anticipated reduction. And Eduardo, and to the deans here, we hope from my office to have a number to you very soon, as we calculate what is the anticipated state university fee revenue in excess of what we budget. So that's an issue that we should be able to handle, the spring anticipated reduction, without tremendous upheaval. We're worried about the payroll. This is an important consideration, and I see a lot of the people in the room are employees, and I want to make some comments about the payroll because it could worry you, or it's me sometimes. But what Andy, it's unclear how the credit markets are going to respond to this budget bill, because there's still quite a bit of uncertainty associated whether it really is a budget bill because of what might happen on May 19th, because at the moment, the state is out of money. So what the state needs to do in order to make its payroll, it needs to go out into the credit markets and borrow money, and this is not a great time to be borrowing money. This could present problems for the university, the state of California meeting its payroll. So to reassure you, in the California State University system, we were asked back in January to begin to do a careful estimate of our cash flow position as a campus. And our payroll, just to give you all a sense, runs about $7 million a month. When I throw in the self-support funds, it's about another million. So about $8 million a month is our payroll at SSU and ASI and Student Union and all of our auxiliaries and self-support funds. Based on the analysis that we've done, we believe at Sonoma State University that we have sufficient monies, cash, to make what I'll call the February payroll, but that's the payroll that comes on March 1 for the work that we did in February. We would make February, March, April, and May. But we get a little tricky in June. We run out of money. And the reason we start doing that is that traditionally, students start registering for classes in the May timeframe, and they start paying their tuition for the fall, and we're able to keep that cash. So we'll be able to manage our payroll through May. When we get to that June payroll, which is the check we get in July, it gets a little tricky. But me and the financial staff at the university are looking for ways through various inter-fund borrowings from our auxiliary organizations, our self-support funds, and here I'm looking to ASI and Parking and Student Union and Housing and Health Center. These are funds that we have, that we have the ability, if the case comes, to do a short-term loan until the state works itself out. The long and short of it is, if, I would not be losing sleep about your paycheck not being made, we will make the payroll. One way or another, the CSU will make the payroll. You might hear from colleagues at other campuses that their cash position might not be as strong as our cash position, or as weak as our cash position, because each CSU campus has different types of cash position depending on who they are and how they operate. But we have made a, the chancellor has made a commitment that in this case, the CSU system will operate as a system, should this be the case, and those campuses that are more wealthy will help those campuses that are less wealthy. So I do not believe that there will be an issue of making the payroll whatsoever as we go forward through this period. If the budget situation becomes more protracted and we get into the summer, you know, we'll just have to play that by year, but at the moment, through this fiscal period, I feel very confident that the payroll issue is not a concern, nor do I believe there will be any move by the CSU or this campus to move to any form of furloughing of employees. So for those issues, they should be put to rest. I know students, there are many students in the room, Derek and I and Nicolette have been in communication. One of the major issues that we had in early part of the spring semester was financial aid. We were unable, or we did not have funds early in the year because of the mess to distribute the Cal Grant A or the Cal Grant B. We went ahead at Sonoma State University and distributed Cal Grant A, which was about $1 million to our student body, and we did that without having the money. That put the school at somewhat of a risk, but the president, the provost, and I made the decision that it was in the interest of our student body to do that. And I was happy to have had the opportunity to visit, I think, with the Campus Reengineering Committee, which was the first consultative body we could get to who endorsed that concept. But we did do it without consultation, I have to admit, but it was urgent and the students were in need of their money. I'm happy to report that we have received 85 percent of that money back from the state, so that's good, and we are confident or hopeful that we'll rip the other 15 percent back. Then came the question of the Cal Grant B. This is about $408,000. This is money that students don't use to pay their tuition, but money that students use to pay their books, their living expenses, food, things of this sort. About 15 days ago, I've forgotten, we made the decision to go ahead and disburse that $408,000 as well, and we have not yet been reimbursed for that money. But we're hopeful that we will, and it's now out in the hands of the students doing what it should be doing. And if by some chance it comes to pass that we do not get reimbursed for that money, then we will have to figure out some kind of way to finance that as we get closer to the June 30th timeframe. But financial aid, Nicolette, Derek, from your perspective and the student perspective, and I'm hopeful that Peter and Eric will work with the various student groups to communicate that, as far as I'm aware, financial aid issues are not an issue at this institution. Other universities, other CSUs have not done the Cal Grant Bs yet. So we went out a little bit on a limb to do that, and that decision may or may not be criticized, but it seemed to be the right decision to make because the students were soon coming up to a place where there are other forms of financial aid, their Pell Grants, their loans were running out, and the rent was due and food had to be purchased. So it was a pretty basic need. But we're a little bit exposed there financially at $400,000. Another issue that came to pass since we had the opportunity to get together with the, in the town halls, is that our capital projects were frozen. The state of California told us to halt all state-funded capital projects. This did not apply to Tuscany, which is a student-funded project through the Systemwide Revenue Bond Program. That's our money, it's not technically in the state's coffers. We manage that locally, so that was not frozen, and it's proceeding on target. But it did apply to three projects that you see here. Two of them, the Chiller Number Two Upgrade and the Energy Control Project, are associated with our sustainability initiative that we're doing to conserve energy. They were between 50 and 90 percent complete at the time the freeze came. They were associated with PG and E rebates, that is to say that if we did not complete the project, we would not get the rebate money. So we had to make a decision, do we shut these projects down, or do we go forward? We sought permission from the chancellor's office to go forward. They gave us that permission to go forward, but we had to front the money. So we're kind of out there, exposed, $500 and some thousand dollars that we have not yet been reimbursed. I'm looking to Christopher to see if the check has come, not yet. But in my conversations with the chancellor's office, I have it on pretty good authority that we will get reimbursed. The question is when. It may not make it by June, it may come in August, it all depends on the cash position. But I did want to share with the campus community here, and I certainly will do it in PBAC and the academic senate and all the other organizations that I get the chance to speak at, that we are a little bit exposed here on these capital projects and on this Cal Grant stipend B. We have factored the expenditure of these funds into the cash flow projections associated with payroll, so they would not have an impact of my previous comments that I made before about payroll or furloughing. The last one, GMC Equipment, that was to be funded by the state. We had money from the state of California to buy some instructional equipment for the Green Music Center. That got frozen, and so what we've done is we've shifted that expenditure away from the state budget and put it onto the fundraising budget. We hope that when the state reimburses us, whenever that may come to pass, we'll give it back to the fundraising side. So most of the cash issues are pretty much under control, but there are some things that we're worried about. The faculty development phase, year two, for those of you who are new to the budgeting process, we made a commitment, I guess it's this year is when we made the commitment, this first year we're doing it, to build a $1 million faculty development budget. And we started in 989 with the $200,000 first augmentation. we started in 989 with the $200,000 first augmentation.
Oh, last year.
Was it last year? Oh, so this is the second year, so we technically need to add another 200 this year to bring it to 400,000. And we will do that if the president agrees. And as I mentioned to Eduardo just an hour ago, I think that while we will do that, we may ask the faculty and the academic leadership not to spend it just yet, because we might need it for the payroll. So it could be that there'll be a big faculty development, a larger than normal faculty development fund in the 9-10 year, because we'll roll it forward, but it might be not possible to spend that second installment this year, but we will make the allocation. And you may wonder, where do you think we're going to get the allocation? And so not to be in the dark, I believe that we will have generated sufficient dollars from our revenue management program to make that as a permanent allocation. A bit of background on what the revenue management program is, for the budget folks in the room, you know this, but many newcomers, so it's helpful for everyone to understand. Approximately two or three, two years ago, we persuaded the state legislature to permit us to deposit the state university fee, the dollars that the students pay, in a local investment vehicle as opposed to depositing those funds in the state treasury. This turned out to be a really helpful thing to do, because a very substantial portion of our budget is now managed by us locally as opposed to the state treasury, which helps us meet our payroll. Because if that money were with the state, it would be being sucked up by all other state agencies, so the fact that we control it turns out to be a very good thing. But just as important, we earn interest on that money, because we spend it as the last money that we spend. We spend the government appropriation first, and then we invest that money in very secure investments, largely treasuries and high-grade corporate paper. It's not a good time to be investing, as you probably all know by watching your own portfolios, but we have done reasonably well, and I believe that we will generate that $200,000 in base, that we can make an allocation to the academic area for faculty development phase two. But as I mentioned, I think the president may ask the provost not to actually spend it, but perhaps commit it for 9-10, but not actually let the cash go out the door until we're a little more clear about what happens on May 19th and where our payroll situation happens. But I think the faculty development side is under control for year two. One of the things that worries, the other big issues in 9-10, I'm sorry, in 8-9 that we struggle with, is what we call the foundation endowment distribution. On the backside of the first page, you see monies that we allocated in the beginning of 8-9 from money that we made in 7-8 to a variety of academic programs, and this money is generated from our university endowment that's held by the foundation. The money gets generated by investing the endowment in accordance with our investment policy, which places these monies in a combination of real estate investments, equities, short-term money, alternative investment, and some hedge funds. And we generally generate sufficient resources to make this $1,100,000 allocation, which is important to the ongoing operation of many of our academic programs. Unfortunately, as you're all aware by watching the TV, the markets have not done well, and we have not done well in the foundation, nor has any other foundation done well. In fact, we're underwater, that is to say, that the value of our portfolio is less than what we had when it was given to us. It's an unrealized loss, that is to say, it's not, it's on paper, but if we were to liquidate today, we would be underwater. Foundations generally take a long-term view and are, should be prepared for these fluctuations, not maybe as wild as the one that we just went through, but everyone has the confidence that this portfolio will return to its former position and will be back in a solvent position. But you can see that in order to make a distribution of these funds that we're working with now for the 9-10 year would require us to sell assets which are undervalued, which would be a bad thing, because when the market does return, we would not be able to gain that return. So we are working, in my office now, Janice Peterson and myself and the entire budget team are developing a strategy that we can mitigate or make this distribution, but not from the foundation, but from other funds. This is very important to the campus scholarship program and several of the endowments, and I don't have a solution to share with you today or even to seek consultation on. We don't have that strategy quite worked out yet. But there remains a commitment to try to make the units whole. So if you're in the Person Fund, I'm looking at Bill, or if you're in the Schultz Endowment, here in the library, if you're at the Galbraith Preserve, if you're the Osher Lifelong Learning Program, these are programs that really rely on these resources, and turning to the students, the scholarship program is very important as well. We'll of course discuss this with PBAC next week, but Dr. Arminiana has instructed me to try to develop a strategy that we can mitigate what is an unfortunate situation in the overall equity markets that have caused our portfolio to not perform as well as it could have. In a similar way, our School of Extended Education has some issues that we're struggling with. School of Extended Education has been hit with the loss of the summer school. It has some additional debt associated with the Green Music Center that it's unable to generate revenue from the structure that it built, because the building isn't complete yet. And so it's in a situation where it is going to need to have some support, at least for the 9-10 year and perhaps the 10-11 year. The reason why it needs the support is because the School of Extended Education, as part of its operations, makes an annual distribution to the schools and the library. The schools and the library rely on that money to fund a substantial portion of their operating expense. So if that's not able to be provided, it causes there to be a real problem for the schools. So Eduardo and Mark and I met yesterday, and we've made a pact that we're going to try to resolve that issue for 9-10. We haven't had a chance to visit with President Arminiana, although Eduardo may have, not in detail, but I feel very confident that Ruben is sensitive to the issues of both the extended education issue and the foundation issue. So I think that we will come up with a strategy that perhaps by the March, if not the April Town Hall, I will be able to share with you. And then finally, for 9-10, we're worried about athletic scholarships. We are required, they're not listed in the scholarship money that I just discussed before, but under the NC2A regulations, we're required to distribute a certain number of scholarships. We have ongoing commitments to our student athletes that we want to honor in good faith. Our coaches are hard at work trying to raise those resources, but in this climate, as you might expect, and I'm sure my colleagues in the development office would indicate, people are, at the moment, being more careful about making contributions, because they're not clear on where their own portfolios stand. So discretionary giving is challenging and more difficult in these times, and our coaches are finding that to be the case as well. So we have to figure out a solution to make sure we shore up the student athlete problem. So you, it's important to keep those things in the context of the $1,505,000. I'm bringing us now full circle to the 9-10 budget planning and the conversation that Andy shared with us at the beginning. Those are the challenges with where we now stand, but I would not be concerned about reiterate the issue of student scholarships. I would not be worried about financial aid. I would not be worried about furloughing, and I would not be worried about not making the payroll. But I do think that in order to absorb even a $1,535,000 reduction, which in my judgment is our best case, will require enormous sacrifices. And that's why in the packet we put together, based on input that we got from the last Town Hall, ideas that were generated in this group and, or the group that was here last time, about ways that we could, in fact, mitigate this reduction. I've characterized them or split them by division, because there are various committees on campus that are probing into these in much more detail. So for example, the Campus Reengineering Committee is taking up those issues that are apropos to that area. Perhaps the Academic Affairs Budget Advisory Committee would take up the ones that are more, or the J-CAP, or whatever appropriate place would be logical for those things that relate primarily to academic programs, which are more, not the purview of the administration as much. But these are great ideas that have been generated and are being examined as a way to help mitigate the $1,535,000 cut, or whatever the cut turns out to be. Let me apologize for so much talking on my part, and Andy did a little bit too, but let's now stop and see if we can answer any questions about anything that we've talked about or any other issues that may be on people's mind, and it would be interesting to hear what folks here might think about this new commitment that many of you are hearing for the first time, to support diversity efforts in a financial way, if there's any reaction or thought to that, even though it's a tight budget time. But any questions or comments are, of course, welcome. No questions or comments? Well?
I guess I'll make a comment, Larry.
Okay.
I'm overlooked. Excuse the cold I'm struggling through right now, but I just want to, when you look at these things, particularly that item, I support that whole heartily, finding permanent state support funding for the diversity programming and diversity staff on this campus. And I think the same thing could be said for faculty development. Some of what, I think it's actually a good strategy to look at those things as some of the cost of doing business to run a university in a mission-centered way, and to not, in a bad budget time, destroy the very things that you need to make sure that you continue over time, so that the university continues to thrive. So it's easy to look at those things and say, why are we doing those things when we're facing this bad budget cut? I guess I do have a question for you, for you, Larry, is that I heard on the news, or maybe Andy, you know about this, that there is some talk about trying to get the enrollment levels of the CSU back down. I think it's going to be too late for next year, but given, given these drastic cuts, if we're going to try to do our mission-centered approach and do what we're supposed to be doing as educators, it seems like they're going to be sending us too many students. So how is that access and quality issue going to be managed, given these very, very bad budget cuts?
Tim, I have heard nothing to that, along those lines yet.
Well, the only thing I've heard is that, you know, the cuts that they've already proposed that we've got to reduce, because we didn't get the funding, and that my understanding is from limited data, it's more than anecdotal but hardly universal, is that we're not going to be, we're still going to have too many students again next year. I mean, we didn't make it, you know, projected on who we've accepted and then who's applied and stuff like that. So, and I think some of that stuff might have come from stuff Eduardo sent out, is that, you know, we are going to be, the system is going to be over-enrolled again, but, from the proposed cuts, but I don't know how bad it's going to be. But that's, I don't hear that this is any new, this is something that we've now talked about for a year, that we're going to, you know, if we don't get the money, we're going to have to reduce access to students, and we were not making it. That's what I understand it is.
Eduardo?
Yeah, I would only add that, and I don't know if everybody knows about this, but some people do, that this year, what will be different is that the chancellor's office has decided that they will not allow campuses to keep excess fee revenue beyond 2% above the target. So we have a 2% window where if we do go over our target by that much, we do get to keep, we do get to keep the extra fees, but if we go beyond 2%, we won't have the fees available to fund the instruction for those extra students. This year, we went over 5%. So next year, we're determined to stay well below 2% of our target, but, and we've been trying to forecast, based on the admissions that are currently online for the fall and the continuation rates that we're predicting and so forth, and depending on what the behavior of the students will be next year, whether it matches fall '07 or fall '08, then we could be anywhere from 0.5% below target to 1.5% above target. That's our best guess.
I might make a few comments. I didn't go, we talked a little bit about the federal stimulus bill from an operating perspective, which could be a very, very important piece to our viability going forward. But there's another part that the campus might want to be aware of, and that's the capital portion. In the, in the stimulus bill, there is some money, it's a little hard to understand, associated with what's called modernization or renovation or repair of instructional or educational And certainly, and as I read the bill, I haven't read the bill, but I have read these excerpts from the bill, and some portion of that money will come to California, and some portion of that money for this capital side will come to the CSU. And the way SSU itself will benefit will be in one of three or four ways. I suspect that a good portion of the money that comes to the CSU will go into what we call our minor capital outlay program. Translated for a while, we look at it here, that's really important to our classroom renovation program. So what you could see happening with federal stimulus money, since the state doesn't have any money for minor cap, we could see this federal money coming to help support the renovation of some of our classrooms. The other thing that we tend to use our minor capital money for is to improve the campus for persons with disabilities, our ongoing efforts with physical, the physical changes, not the technological ones, or ADA kinds of issues. There's also probably money that would come to the campus if the federal stimulus money flows through the CSU for what we generally call capital renewal projects. These are generally large infrastructure projects, like chillers and heating and ventilation systems, and Christopher will do his very best, Christopher DeNoe, to position us well on both the CSU, in the CSU politics, to make sure that we get some of that cash should it flow. The two big projects, which we would be hoping for that would, could come to pass from the federal stimulus money, are funds to complete the Green Music Center, some $18 million we've placed in the, in our proposal to complete green. We shall see if that comes to pass, as well as funds to construct the professional school building, which is the building that would house our school of business and economics, education, and nursing. To be honest with everyone here, I think that one is a little harder, because the federal people are looking for projects that go right away. They want to be able to get that money onto the street and hire people, and our business, our new professional school building is not designed, so it'd be kind of hard to move it along. But we have $18 million worth of projects which we could let tomorrow at green, so it maybe will come to pass. We'll see. The more urgent need, if you ask me, is in the operating side, to avoid the other side. So we'll have to see what all these requirements are with the stimulus.
Well, that prompts one thought, and that is about the stimulus package, and that is that one of the things that, as it worked its way through Congress and was signed, there was a greater emphasis on education as a capital project. I mean, you know, they talked about a stimulus package to, and the other nice thing was is that there was actually language that specifically said, "public higher education." They included that in the discussion of education, and that may not seem like much, but for those of you who actually think about how budgeting is done, the number of legislators, both at the state and national level, who when they talk about education, forget that after you graduate from high school, that there's education. So by including specifically language, I mean, there's a recognition that was encouraging, but again, we don't know how the money's going to play out, and the Republicans had made it fairly clear, they don't want a lot of new programs. That's why they like remodeling better than building. And because of the 60-vote necessity in the Senate, you know, that had some impact. But, but I, that is, you know, as we're looking ahead, there was actually some positive things. The president has actually talked about higher education as kind of infrastructure, which at least shows that he gets it.
It, I'm sorry, yeah, Art.
What are we looking at for 21st Century Sustainability Solutions? That's an interesting concept.
If I recall correctly, in one of the earlier versions of the stimulus bill, I don't know if it was the House version or the Senate version, I'm not sure where it came, but it seems to me that at least energy-type sustainability projects were important as a priority, and I thought there was money in the stimulus overall for the country in that era. that area, but, but I may not be answering, Art, your question well. Yes, Jean.
Are efforts towards sustainability, especially the energy series, when buildings helped at all, or going to help as far as public utility?
Well, that's one of the reasons that we went forward, Jean, and fronted the money for those physical projects, because when I asked Christopher if we froze them and gave up the PG and E rebate money, he told me that the utility bill would go up, because we had already factored into our utility projections, savings from those issues. Not to mention the environmental issues, which were more maybe centerpiece to our overall sustainability initiatives. So yes, they have a direct impact.
It seems to me that sustainability is such a hot topic in Sonoma County and environments at large, that it would be worth putting together a group to brainstorm ways in which that theme could get additional community support.
It's a good idea. Susan?
Yeah, the heads, a couple of weeks ago, the heads of UC, the CSU and the community colleges got together and talked about increasing the numbers of transfer students at the upper division level and, and redirecting students to the community colleges. I'm wondering what impact that would have on our budgets, because right now, we tend to be funding lower-division freshman classes, and our upper division is in need of some attention.
Eduardo, you might be better equipped to answer that than me. Not to put you on the spot, but I-
I'm not quite sure what the question was.
Well, the question was that statewide, the UC system, the CSU and the community colleges got together, and UC in particular is limiting its enrollment by 10,000 students, which are now going to go to community colleges. And there seemed to be some agreement that there was going to be more of an emphasis of doing lower-division work at community colleges and upper-division work at the CSU and UC, if my reading of what their discussions was is correct. So my question is, we tend to be funding more freshmen historically, and there's going to be a, a need for a shift in attention to the upper division, and I'm wondering what the costs might be. Are we looking at that as we look at our budget projections for the future?
Well, to be very candid, and I've heard this mentioned in the CSU, that, that seemed more of a publicity stunt by the UC.
Really?
We know that the capacity of community colleges to absorb more students is very limited, and their transfer rates, once they accept students to the four-year systems, is not, no, I mean, it's not a very good one. So we don't think it's really going to have that much of an effect, because they're, they're facing budget cuts themselves.
Well, we spend a lot of money in remedial work, and I'm wondering if there's some way to address that aspect of-
We tried to, we actively explored with Santa Rosa Junior College, the option of having them handle the remediation for us for math, and our math department was willing to go there, but their math faculty backed out of it.
To that.
We're nearly out of time, and it occurs to me, as I think all of the folks here would agree, there will be more information now coming out of the budget. And I don't remember, Barbara might recall, when our next Town Hall is. But it might be wise, and I'm, I'm sort of asking my friends here on the table, that if some new knowledge comes that might be useful, we might want to schedule a Town Hall in the meantime, to get-
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth of March, so it's about a month away, so if, if things come clearer, certainly President Arminiana will send something through in his normal way. But sometimes people need, it's better to have a give and take and have the questions side, it sounds like, Tim-
We had more give today, not so much take.
Take. But I think it would be good.
This is a really big audience, you guys are interested.
Thanks, Barb. So we will watch the email, and the, we're going to place ads in the SSU Star newspaper announcing when the future ones would be, but there could be one in between now and the 19th. There's a webinar on Monday on the stimulus package that several of us are going to participate in, to try and understand that law better. CSU is analyzing it, and they'll get us information, I'm sure, organize, the CFA and their political connections. So I think it might be good, so stay tuned and we'll see, have another one maybe before.
I just wanted to, oh, I'm sorry.
And I wanted to acknowledge and thank Barbara and Alicia for all their logistical support in putting these together, along with the University Affairs people who do the communication and Andy.
I just wanted to suggest that, that everything that we talked about, about what happened today, is so fluid that, you know, keep checking, there, I may have gotten things off by a little or a lot, I don't think I got them off by a whole lot, but keep checking what really happened in Sacramento in the middle of the night and early this morning is still on, I don't know if it's unfolding or unraveling, but it is still, you know, it's, it is a dynamic situation, so watch it very closely over the next few days, because it's just not finalized.
That's the line of day.
Good. Thank you all so much, see you soon.